Okay guys, it's 5:01 PM. We're gonna go ahead and kick the work session off. I wanna thank everybody for being here tonight. I didn't think I was gonna make it, but I had five minutes to spare. So I'm gonna ask Councilman Roar to open us up in prayer, if that's okay?
Let it pray. Father God, we thank you for this day and we thank you for the opportunity to get to serve your people in our town. Well, we ask you to help us have an understanding in mind tonight and keep us safe when we leave. And we are thankful for everything you do for us and your name we pray. Amen.
I said Councilman Roar and I was looking at Councilman Fow. But, thank you, Dave.
Mm-hmm, I got you.
Okay. So first item of the work session, it says, "Discussion by Steve Masters, Director of Silicon Park and Recreation, regarding update on new pickleball/basketball court project in the new Master Recreational Center."
We are waiting on our architects. They were stuck in traffic. They should be here any minute.
They're walking to the door.
Sounds good. Alright. Let's see what we got. Next, we got, next is discussion by William Livingston, City Attorney, regarding Resolution Number 10-2025, authorizing Silicon Park's in Recreation to oversee land usage agreement with Silicon Youth Softball.
With the help of everybody, Steve and Cheryl that's over there, with the softball people, we were able to get together an agreement and the resolution is just approving that agreement. They are now incorporated as of this afternoon. So, what's on, what you're gonna be signing, it calls, you're approving the agreement that calls, that says they're incorporation. They provided the insurance, everything that they were supposed to provide. And it's due to be approved.
Okay. Alright. Thanks, William. Anybody has any questions on that? Then we're gonna go ahead, then your people, Steve.
Alright.
Come on, sir.
Alright. So we'll go back to number one. So discussion by Steve Masters, Director of Silicon Park and Recreation, regarding update on new pickleball/basketball court project in the new Master Recreational Center. So this should be exciting. I think everybody's been waiting for this update. I know I have.
Is eight inch amount?
Eight foot and eighteen inch amount.
We can try.
We can try.
I can do it, can I get it?
Hey. Hey, Steve, is it gonna take y'all a couple of seconds to get it set up?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead to the next item, if that's okay? Alright, so the next item on the agenda, that's why I didn't smile on that meeting. Discussion by Nate Osborne, Fire Department Chief, regarding quote, "Received from Pearson's Electric for Station One renovations totaling $32,336, funding for capital improvement reserve fund." And this is something that we had already approved during capital.
Just approving the expenditure of the funding that was...
Okay, and everything is still the same? Alright. So this is exciting, so I'm gonna have to ask you in budget time. Didn't we already do that? Y'all have any questions on that? Okay. Number four, discussion by Nicole Brown, Interim City Clerk, Treasurer, regarding ordinance Number 2281-25, providing for the electric, election of municipal officers. Okay, Steve, Nicole?
So what this ordinance is, is just basically spelling out the procedures for the upcoming election. It's got the election date listed, eligibility, the polling location. It's got dates regarding absentee voting, when the election results will be, and then run office.
Okay. Anybody has any questions on that?
Just standing right there. That's right.
Alright. So that was good. Next item is also you, Nicole, in the discussion by Nicole Brown, Interim City Clerk, Treasurer, regarding ordinance Number 2282-25, authorizing the use of electronic vote counting devices for use in all municipal elections. So it's basically the same thing?
Yes, there's not a deadline on when this has to be passed, but the league recommends passing it as soon as possible.
Okay.
Just to go ahead and have it done.
And no doubt we gotta have it.
Alright. You guys good? Any questions on this one? Okay. The next item, discussion by Nicole Brown, Interim City Clerk, Treasurer, regarding Resolution Number 8-2025, to declare various office equipment from city inventory as surplus property and authorize disposal through GovNews.com online auction or other appropriate means.
So as we, as we clean up our office, if we have something in inventory that no longer works or is outdated, we set it to the side, put it on the list. And this is just the ordinance, our resolution, I'm sorry, for us to dispose of these copies.
Okay. Hey, so let me ask you this. So when you get the list, do we get a copy of the list out of it?
Yes, ma'am. It's attached to the resolution.
Okay. Any questions on this one, guys? Alright. Next item, discussion by Nicole Brown, Interim City Clerk, Treasurer, regarding the $1 buyout of ten Canon copiers and entry into a maintenance agreement with Canon USA Incorporated. Terms of the maintenance agreement include black and white copies at 0.0086 per page and colored copies at 00483 per page.
So this is for the city's Canon copiers across various departments. The contract is ended. They're still in good working order. So the maintenance agreement would just be, we would just be charged per black and white copies and per colored copies. But it also includes toner and maintenance.
I got a question. So do we have to, like, do we just give them, like, is there like an open P.O. for this or something? And if you need more money, you come back? How do we pay for this?
We, we do that through G.L., just G.L. loan. That's how we pay for it. Because it's really hard to estimate how many black and white copies, but we budget for it.
Okay.
This is, this is a very good deal. That's, I'm surprised that's very good.
Hopefully it's not. Any questions on this, guys?
Alright.
Next item, discussion by Nicole Brown, Interim City Clerk, Treasurer, on the status and progress of work performed by accounting consultant Melody Salter.
So you should all have a handout in front of you. And, but I'll, I'll go over it. So Melody was hired as an accounting consultant in June to assist with our account reconciliations and just general accounting operations. As of right now, all of our bank accounts are reconciled through the fiscal year '23. And she has twenty out of thirty reconciled up until January of 2025. She's also currently working with the municipal court to establish a different system for proceeding in their funds and also paying them out so they're completely different. So she's had to work with the court office to build new GLs and new process, and that's almost completed. And then I can go over her progress to date if you'd like.
Um, I don't, you don't have to. We knew about some of this. We talked about it. It was just nice to see it on paper, just for us to have a copy. And that way, just to know, I mean, we can't really put a dollar amount on her value. You know, we all know how valuable she is and we know what she brings to the table. But just to see how far she's brought us from where she started when she first came is, I think I just needed to see it on paper.
I think I would go as far as saying it probably wouldn't have, with all they got, y'all got going on, it would be hard if y'all didn't get this far without her.
And I, I really don't know if we would've been able to get the bond issue without her.
I know, yeah, she was a key person in that.
In order for us to get that, the auditors had to be assured that the fiscal year '23 audit would be completed on time, and she was really instrumental in us getting that.
Money well spent.
Yes.
Well, this is good. It's nice to see it on paper and I can't wait to see this list grow. Because I know she's steady working and she's just continuing to, to just check things off. So we'll probably get a two-page list next time.
Question.
Sorry?
Have the reconciliations covered any problems? Or are they just, it was just a labor of getting them all done because they hadn't been done in such a long time?
There were a few accounts that she ran into problems with, especially the ones that the majority of the accounts payable was paid out of, just because of the sheer volume. And then she, you know, there, when you're doing reconciliations, you'll have a couple of things that you have to chase, or where was this check written out of? Why didn't it clear up here? And as she's been going through the reconciliations, she's identified issues in ways that we can do better going forward, so it's not so much back end. If you just do it, correct, fund accounting the first time and there's less dirt on trees.
But nothing, but nothing scared her?
No, no, not at all. And she's found nothing in anything.
And this is exciting too. And I said, even when we got our audit report, I said, you know, I don't wanna quote him. I think he said, we're, he hasn't, he hasn't seen the city in this shape, this good of a shape in over ten years. So...
He said that.
Yeah. So that's exciting too. Alright. So any questions on this, guys? Alright. So we'll go back to, we'll go back to number one, if you guys ready.
Mr. Steve Alley with William Blackstock. He's gonna be doing the presentation. But we've had several meetings, as y'all know, about the pickleball courts and basketball courts and the recreation center. The rec center, we, after the core drillings, they had to go back and try to find out how that building was gonna be situated on that piece of property. And that was one of the big holdups on that. But as y'all know, Reed and the street department's done an amazing job filling in the pool. They're gonna start tearing the building down soon. So it looks like the pickleball, basketball is gonna happen sooner than later.
Alright.
Hey, Derek. I guess that doesn't work, so hey, there. Just trying to get out of the way so that I'm not in your line of sight or your line of sight. So morning or evening, welcome to everyone. I woke up thirty minutes ago. Evening to everyone. Hope y'all are doing well. Just been working closely with Steve and Chris, as well as Ryan Coleman here in town. And this is Celia Gannaway in our office as well. So we've been doing a lot of work, making a lot of progress. We wanted to go over the pickleball and basketball site and the development there for a moment. We have some really exciting images to show you. Then talk about our progress and what we've been doing on the rec center. And then go over kind of a high-level schedule overview and what to expect for both of them. So for the pickleball and basketball, it's, as you know, at the old municipal site. And as Steve has noted, a lot of great progress has been made to demolish the old pool and, and fill it in in a way that will work well, you know, for a contractor to come in and build on top of it in an effective way. So that's been done really well. That's also helped to save dollars. Lots of dollars. So I think that's a really great, you know, kudos to y'all for doing that. So what we have been looking at putting here, it's a, I think, very similar scope to what we have talked about. Removing the existing pool and building and keeping the parking because it's in good shape. And in the spirit of, we will, we will enhance it and beautify it. But in the spirit of putting the money where it matters most, trying to keep the parking is there.
Go ahead. You know, this right here, that looks, the courts look mighty close to each other. Is that gonna be enough room to play pickleball with?
Yeah, so we've got other images of that we'll show you and I'll go over that. But yes, I'll just say, we have sized the pickleball so that they can be used for, you know, standard sizes with aisles on each side and, and at the back, so they can be used for competition. That, that's a, that is an important point. And there's a few courts that have some space on each side so that spectators can, can watch as well, which is important. So we are looking at a total of eight pickleball courts. Two of them will be what we call a bid alternate, so that there will be a six minimum. And if the funds, if the construction bids come in within the allowable dollars, we can add those two to have a total. And then also a basketball court. There will be outdoor lighting, you know, for courts that, that is, that are designed for courts throughout. And then we'll renovate the parking and put in a small building, really, that just consists of two toilets and a drinking fountain and then a covered canopy, so that there will be some shade and some seating area, as well as a little bit of landscaping. You know, we're, most of the site will be filled up with hard surface, because that's just what it takes for the courts. But I think we have developed a highly efficient layout to pack in as much sport and activity as possible into this. So we have some renderings that we wanna show you. One thing that, you know, we always like to kind of come up with ideas as we develop the overall design. And talking with Steve and, and working through things, what we really started to focus on is creating a small park that's focused on sport and active play. But also, you know, the idea that sports are, are very, are obviously active. And that activity creates a great social opportunity. You know, one thing we've learned with pickleball is it really brings people together from all different ages. You see different ages playing on the same court. So sports are very social. And for Sillicaga, that goes to sports really, and these sports really help to create community. So we were, you know, just playing, you'll see this in a second, but through the idea of this active play and the sport, creating really, trying to highlight the community aspect of this park in addition to the, the sport and the play aspect of this park. So we were just kind of playing here with, you know, logo ideas that you'll see in a minute. You know, it's just kind of like the idea of Sillicaga unites behind. You can't really read that totally, but you know, by playing, by swinging, by dinking, by bouncing, by dribbling, by competing, by cheering. So just kind of having fun with the whole idea of sports lead to community. So this is an aerial view from the corner, the corner of Norton. The existing parking is in the foreground and you will look at various views of this. But we looked at creating a gateway kind of pavilion right there at the front of, at the heart at the entry to the pickleball courts. And you see the eight pickleball courts and then in the, the, the back there, it's the basketball court that is obviously larger. So this is a kind of a closer view. So what we looked at was, as, as we developed the overall site, we tried to make it honestly pack in as much court play as possible, as many courts as possible. And that green space that you see in the middle is really the, the remaining space, the leftover space that you just can't fit a court into. So in lieu of maybe putting that off to one side, we looked at creating more of a green space, a turf space in the middle that really is a gather, could serve also as a community gathering space that is fronted by this pavilion. And we'll look at some images of the pavilion. But all of the pickleball courts and the basketball court really are organized around this green space. So that green space can serve as, you know, just a hangout space in the middle of the day. People are coming and going from playing pickleball or basketball. But also, it could be used for, for other community-type events. A small gathering space, you could use it for movies at night, things like that. So, you know, it's really meant to be a very efficient sport park for pickleball and basketball, but also be more than that. You know, just by use of, this is leftover space that, that, you know, can't fit another court into. So how can we create something really interesting out of it?
Got two quick questions.
Yeah.
I see the space for seating on each court. Is it just standard with those? That people bring their own chairs? Or is there gonna be bleachers and such there? And also, is this gonna be a 24/7 access then, or is there gonna be...
It'll be 24/7 access for sure. We're, we're looking at, not to throw a name out, but Musco type lighting.
Yeah. And outdoor type of lighting.
And obviously, there'll be landscape lighting as well. But the site furnishings aren't really put in this drawing yet. They did do some concrete benches around the green space that we hope we can fit into the bed. But it'll probably come to a point where we do some additional site furnishings once the thing's built.
Yeah. And then I was gonna add, I think it's a mix. Just looking at different parks and seeing how people use them, it's honestly a mix of using benches that are there or bringing their own chairs. I think if people realize, hey, I'm gonna be there for a little while, they like to bring their own holdout chair. But if they're just there for, you know, a match and maybe watch a few minutes of someone else's match, they sit on a bench.
I, I got a question. You know, some of us that, some of you guys that didn't graduate from Silicon, you probably won't understand it. But we went with that powder blue and gray.
So have you looked at the Sillicaga parking lot logo?
I have. I put a week one with that powder blue.
In the new playground? Yeah.
You went with that?
It, it's not the blue that's twenty miles down the road, sir. I promise you.
It's close.
It's close.
I, I think there are some standard, to that point, there are some standard colors and Steve has been counseling us on what colors to use. But we will get as close to whatever he would like us to get.
That's cool. He, he's, he's over and I'm just, you know, he gets where I'm coming from.
He's not hard. It's okay.
Got you.
So now we wanted to come down and look as you're kind of approaching down at eye level into this entry canopy area. So here you can see the, the walkway as you come and you park, or you walk from somewhere else. Got a nice canopy covered area. The bathrooms are there on your left. But, you know, just, you may not need as much shade today. Come August, boy, take every bit of that shade you can get.
July too?
July. June, maybe May. So this is zooming up closer to it. And just, you know, looking at, number one, being very durable materials. Number two, being very efficient use of, you know, structure and materials. But durable being, you know, still, still structure for the canopy and the concrete block for the, for the bathroom building, so it can be very durable. This is very similar of what we do at other parks as far as durability. Because, you know, we don't wanna create maintenance issues for parks and rec five, ten, fifteen years down the road. And then, you know, still kind of playing with this whole idea, maybe there's some, you know, nice signage or something. That's the Sillicaga Unites, you know, kind of branding idea that we showed you a minute ago, just there, painted on the building. But something that creates some vibrancy and excitement. So as you walk up, you see, you know, you've got a place to sit, you've got shade, and then you see the green space behind it and then pickleball and basketball surrounding all of that. So as we continue to walk through, this is just on the other side of the canopy, looking back. But you see some nice bench space, benches right there, you know, at the, at the green, at the lawn. And then this is kind of all the way back at the back. And looking, you know, the, the pickleball courts are there to the right and then far off. The fences are not, you know, for pickleball, they're not high. They're not tall like tennis, which I think is really great because all of that really promotes this idea of, you know, you can hang out right here at the turf space and watch the pickleball court, go up and watch and come back. And, you know, just really promote this idea of hanging out and lingering. So it really becomes a city park and hopefully contributes to the idea of your, your quality of life. So that's exciting to us.
I have a, I have a couple of questions. Steve probably doesn't know what I'm gonna ask. I, I'm excited, but I'm a little confused. I thought it was gonna be half and half. That's what I know we talked about.
It was always gonna be one full-size basketball court and the rest...
Maybe I was the only person that thought that then.
I guess so, but maybe there was a misunderstanding.
Yeah. Is this the only place we have pickleball courts in? So will this be the only pickleball place?
You know, currently, they're playing at the tennis court.
Well, are they strike court or are we just winging it like?
We're, we're kind of winging it. The net's different. There's a lot of differences between pickleball and tennis.
Okay. But this, so this will be the only pickleball site we'll have?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, one more thing. So will you, I guess with the, how many did I count? Six, eight? How many courts did I count?
We're shooting for eight, but budget, you know, depends on how the bids come in. It could go down to six.
Will that mean we'd be able to hold, do you have to have a certain amount of courts for competition or tournaments? Or am I maybe saying it wrong or not?
There's no one in our immediate area who has eight courts. So it would definitely help us in local competition. Now, when you get to bigger cities, like Opa-locka has 24 courts. So like, national stuff or regional stuff, you're never gonna compete to that. But we could draw people in from a good fifty-mile radius with eight courts.
What's great competition?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Do we have to name this?
That's been the topic of the session. And we, we're definitely gonna put a name on it and we don't know how we're gonna get to that name, so...
My name's Tiffany.
Okay. We've had some creative ones, but we haven't, we haven't hit the nail on the head here.
Well, you know, Tiffany Ball. If something's called pickleball, I think it's all up for grabs.
I don't think I want my name in the same sense.
It was the Knicks Ball.
The Knicks Ball. The Jim, you know, Jim Ball.
I'm good. You're ruined.
But, you know, we can come back with, you know, some signage showing all of your names, as long as it has ball behind it.
We're good. I think we're good.
Left is ball.
We're good. Alright. Anybody else have any questions? I'm excited about that.
So we have shared a couple of these images, or at least one or two. We could share more with Steve. But, you know, we also see, we'll go over this with the schedule, but see this as opportunities for community awareness. You know, and try to create images that, that help y'all feel excited.
I'm excited.
Yeah. Good. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, we're real excited, you know. We're very much trying to keep this efficient. And Steve, if you're ever curious, is very much communicating that to us every single time we meet. But at the same time, trying to create more than just, hey, this is a place to go play pickleball or basketball, but it's a place that reflects your community, so... Alright, the rec center, as Steve noted, we are making progress on it. We did a couple of things, kind of, from a schedule perspective. Put a little bit of our focus on the pickleball to make sure it could get going quickly. And then that also worked well with, as we got into this site area, and, you know, once it had been decided on, we really need to focus with our civil engineer, Michael Rice, that you all know, about where exactly does this building go? Because there's a large footprint. To make sure that it works well with the soil conditions that are there. And there, there are options there, but the soil conditions and possible water levels in the ground and things like that, just to make sure we don't end up spending a lot of money in the ground that is not seen, that the money really goes towards the building. So we have been working through that with Michael. And the building shape is more or less very similar to what you see. But we are still studying with, with Michael, with the civil engineer, exactly where it goes. It goes in that general vicinity and the parking still is located generally in this area. As you come up Broadway, there's a turn-in and you have a great view of, of, you know, parking area, easy access, drop-off area, and a great view of the, of the building with the lobby space layered in front of the pool of Jim. So that has been part of our study recently and part of our effort. While we are also working on interior planning. So some of the interior planning we've been looking at is making sure... So some of the interior planning we've been looking at is um, making sure uh that we are laying out the pool and the spectator seating in an effective manner. Um, you know, part of the spectator seating is making sure that the pool deck that is not littered with spectators. Um, but really there's a a vertical separation of some amount so that if you're a spectator, you're not getting in the way of the coaches and the kids or the coaches and the competitors, uh, which is a really important uh aspect. And you can see that at the facility they've built in Huntsville, the Crossplex in Birmingham, uh, handful of other places. So it, you know, it's important. Um, so this is just a, an early view of that auditorium, the aquatic center, indoor pool component of the rec center, but we will be showing you more. This is kind of a, an early preliminary view, part of our planning process, but we like to try to show you visually how it will look and how it starts to um, is organized, you know, not just in plan, but really three dimensionally.
So um, I do have a few questions. Um, Steve or?
Steve.
Yeah.
Steve or Steve?
Would there be um, would there be roll-up doors or is it?
That that's something that that I've mentioned that I want, like you said, this is very preliminary on the on the drawing. And the roll-up doors on which wall it goes on based on where it's located on that property.
Yeah.
Yeah, the glass roll-up doors and like, oh, my, we, we may have to do this after we've played in their long zone in house. But like, I want to have an area out there for the future pool.
Yeah, and that that was gonna be my next question. Will the plumbing, will the plumbing be set up to where we can add on in the future? Because remember, that was in the initial plan to do this inside, but if we get the doors, we can build out from the existing.
So what our discussions have been is we go ahead and lay that area out as a green space.
Uh huh.
And maybe stuff is stubbed up for future expansion. But while we don't have the outdoor pool, the spectators instead of sitting in that room during a really long meet, it's got somewhere outside to go and get out of way.
But we also don't want to put too much money into that, into where we get comfortable because we developed that into something else and we don't want to.
No, when I say green space, it'll be a flat spot that's for a future pool with some nice grass and maybe some structure.
Yeah. Yeah. So I I think you're you're right on target. Um, that's part of that puzzle of working with the civil engineer to make sure we put the building in an effective place financially. But also having the space to build an outdoor pool in the future.
So I know, I know you're saying we're we're working and you guys are trying to get some stuff, you know, get everything figured out. Because we do want to make sure this is done correctly. So what is the timeline to get, to have a shovel in the ground?
Okay, I'll get to that in a couple of minutes, yeah. Um, so that's just kind of a section. Um, looking through the pool and kind of, these are things, kind of showing you how we were, you know, looking at spectator view lines and things like that and making sure it's just effective. And then those those big windows that you see kind of in the back wall, those, that could be roll-up doors. Those are things we're we're looking at and studying as we go. You know, are they fixed windows? Are they roll-up doors? At this point, they can go either way. So, but I think that's a a great idea. And then uh, on the gymnasium side, real quick, you know, we have two basketball courts. And looking at um, bleachers all around that, and part of that is, they can also, they will be striped to where you can have four volleyball courts in there as well. So that's effective. Um, and then you could also look at, well, if there's enough storage, you could use that for a banquet of some sort. So just, you know, kind of laying out, okay, how does banquet seating work in there if that were needed? You know, how could you max it out? So just really studying these spaces for as, creating as multiple, many, many uses as possible. So progress. You asked about schedule. Um, with pickleball, this is pickleball first, then we'll go to rec center. I'm gonna walk up so I can, make sure I can see. So uh, phase one, that you see on the left, was the uh, the master planning and concept phase that we went through with y'all um last year. And now we are in the the phase two, full design, and um, we are right here in the middle, February of twenty twenty-five, showing you all the the nice imagery and we're moving quickly. We're getting ready to go bid to bid to contractors in March and April. That takes about a month. Um, and then uh, for the bids to come in and for contract to be awarded and for the contract to be fully executed uh, by the contractor, we will prepare it, but by the contractor and by the city, breaking ground in May. Um, and then finishing construction in the fall. So I think that that provides hopefully kind of an outlook for you and um, that's moving quickly. But we we also think it's a good time to bid right now. We are seeing a lot of interest from contractors and uh, we we're excited about that because we've been pretty worried about construction costs for several years, so.
Me and you both.
Yeah, yeah. Not that things are coming down, but interest is really important, but.
Y'all have a question? Just wondering aloud if there can be more work in parallel, pickleball and the other project?
Yeah.
Separate projects. And it would seem that they could be parallel tracks with more momentum than.
Yeah.
Shows on.
Okay, so.
Actual slide.
Yeah, so this is the rec center. Um, and I, yes, I think that's a good question and a well-timed question and we had a look, so we are working in, we are working in parallel. Um, we've been doing internal planning and that's what some of those exhibits were to show you on the gym and the pool and planning those components while we work with the civil engineer to figure out exactly where the building goes on site. So we are, we are at that point with the civil engineer, so we are really ramped up on momentum, ramping up on momentum for the rec center as well. So here we are in uh, February of twenty twenty-five and in April, um, possibly late March, but probably early April. Uh, sometime in April, want to come and show you presentation images of the rec center, kind of the the whole floor plan and how the exterior looks, um, similar to what we showed you on the rec center. Um, and provide that whole thing. And then we're working through the spring and the summer to finish the construction documents and go to bid and um, have a groundbreaking sometime in the fall. Um, and we could work as quickly as we can to be as early in the fall as possible on that. So, um, but we are, we are working in parallel. There was, there was kind of a um a juggle of trying to get the the site figured out to make sure, um, the last thing we'll do is spend money in the ground that we don't have to.
Yeah, I think it's a balancing act too. You don't want to postpone the recreation center, but at the same time, I think the quicker, more efficient one to get completed a hundred percent will be the pickleball, basketball. So uh, you know, it's like
Yeah.
which way you goes, obviously, or picking the right way to get this a hundred percent done, then you put a hundred percent effort into the recreation.
Well, we're, yes, that that sounds good, but I do want to be clear, we're, we're not waiting on the rec center. We're going on both.
Yeah.
And um, and I will take the message of.
But it's just, it looks that way because it's easier to, it's easier to develop the pickleball rooms. It's less.
It does look that way.
Factor in what the recreation is.
Yeah.
Can we get a copy of this presentation, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, yes, it it does look that way, but um, you will not be the first nor the last to tell us, please speed up. Um, and candidly, sometimes we need that, I think, so. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much for coming to give us that update. I think everybody was excited to hear that and hopefully um, the community will get to um, watch this work section, work session and everybody get excited about it as well.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And yeah, we'll provide the presentation and then um, if, you know, if it's okay with everyone, we will, we can provide some high-resolution images of of the pickleball. If, you know, I would just suggest, um, what we give you in the presentation is probably not gonna be high resolution, but we can provide the same images in a higher resolution. So if you want to provide them to media or post them yourself, those will be high resolution. So, um, yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then also, um, we're always available. Steve is a great conduit. Steve tells us all the time, hey, I'm hearing this. I mean, you know, so y'all reach out with anything anytime and um, we're always available.
Don't worry, we know.
Yeah, right. If you figure out the name, let's hear it. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, um, that's everything on our um, work session unless somebody else has something.
I give a, I have an update that I was on the hospital or school one, do I do that now?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, I was just in contact with uh, Clint Hissick over at Chris Valley Medical Center and uh, he wanted me to update everybody on just the happenings and what's going on in the hospital. So um, he wrote to me and said, you know, there's some happenings around women's services here at CBMC. Um, we've seen online and what have you. Uh, they've experienced changes with physician representation, but have worked to stabilize a service with uh, Dr. Swearingen and Dr. Garris. They've once again started delivering babies there. And uh, at at one point in time, they all kind of stopped for one reason or another. So we do have doctors delivering babies there. Uh, they have entered into agreement with OBGYN who begins his practice there in April. Um, and there's been some speculation that expected moms would have to travel elsewhere to deliver, and that's not true. So um, they look forward to serving local moms and babies. And also, they are working to potentially add adult psychiatric beds. As you know, they have geriatric side beds that generally serve those sixty-five and over. Now addition of adult site would serve those eighteen to sixty-four. Uh, they require amendments and stuff to um, Alabama State Health Plan and to be awarded these beds. We need to appear before that council, so he said to stay tuned and that's kind of the progress they have going on right now.
Any questions? All right. Anybody else has anything they want to mention or go? Okay, so um, the items, um, action items that are gonna be considered on the agenda are the um, two for the municipal election, um, us authorizing the um, Silicaga Girl Steve softball parking rec contract, um, declaring their office equipment as surplus, um, oh, the um, stuff for the fire department renovations that we've already previously approved in capital, um, approved. Action that is necessary to approve regarding the one-dollar buyout of the copier. What else did I have here? Action that is necessary to approve a three-year um, lease for um, Bobby Ray Green. We talked about that last time. For the Lake Louise property, um, accounts payable. And then, oh, there isn't that. I will have an executive session at the end of the council meeting and when that time comes, I'll read the letter from our time. So we're gonna go ahead and um, all right, we'll take, uh, we need, we're gonna take um, five minutes for um, a quick bathroom break and then uh, we'll be.